Good evening. This work session of the Board of Education for September 16th, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to send a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times and it's also being streamed live on our PPS TV website. Directors Knowles, Morton, and Buell are absent this evening. So, we'll kick off a fairly short agenda tonight with public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
We do. We have five.
Great.
Our first two speakers, David Porter and Greg Burrow.
Okay. So, come on down, folks. I'll just quickly read the instructions. So, I know you all have been here many times, but others on the list may not have. So, thank you very much for taking the time to come to the board meeting. We evaluate your input and look forward to hearing from you. We are not going to respond to any comments or questions at this time, but do please check in with Roseanne, the board manager, and make sure that we have your contact information, either your phone number or email, and she can follow up with you. Any complaints or issues about specific employees should be directed to the superintendent's office, will not be heard in this forum. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. Green light's on the first two minutes. One minute remaining, a yellow light comes on, and then when your time is up, your red light goes on, and we respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. Thank you so much for being here, and you may go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Dave Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. Chair Atkins, Superintendent Smith, members of the board, and members of the public. First, in relation to tonight's board agenda item, allocating additional funding, let me remind you that I've spoken to you several times about the urgent need to reopen Kellogg School at an estimated refurbishing cost of $2 million. Reopening Kellogg is critical to relieving school overcrowding in southeast Portland and to creating needed classroom spaces to open Mandarin and Vietnamese immersion programs in that area. In order to have the additional spaces by next fall, a funding decision is needed now. Second, over two months ago, in prior public comment to the board, I urge the board to request a five-year dual-language immersion expansion plan from PPS administration for consideration in time for the boundary review. For consideration, I also submitted my own five-year immersion expansion proposal, which included adding a two-strand, one-way Spanish dual-language immersion program at the now vacant Humboldt Elementary School in northeast Portland in 2017 and '18. Tonight, I'm speaking to that issue, the need for an additional Spanish immersion program at Humboldt. Recall that I have previously spoken to the board on the specifics of a Spanish immersion program at Smith and of a Japanese immersion program at Tubman. Humboldt Elementary School is not now being used as a school. It is located to the east of Beach Elementary School and close to Jefferson High School. A little diagram there. In the transfer lotteries for the year 2011 through 2014, more than 50 kindergarten applicants for the Spanish immersion program at Beach, enough for an additional two strands, have been turned away each year. This shows sufficient parental interest to open an additional Spanish immersion program nearby. Portland Public Schools should respond to this expression of parent preferences. Over the lottery years of 2012 to 2014, an increasing number of English-native neighborhood applicants have been turned away from the kindergarten at Beach's Spanish immersion programs. For 2013-14, 30 out of 53 neighborhood English-native applicants were wait-listed or denied no space. I recommend that when a new Spanish immersion program is opened at Humboldt, neighborhood English-native applicants for kindergarten at the Beach Spanish immersion program be given priority over out-of-neighborhood English-native applicants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg Burrow.
Hi. My name is Greg Burrow, B-U-R-R-I-L-L. It's good to see you all again. It's been an amazing beginning of the year for me. So far, I've taught at Cesar Chavez, Fabian, Oakley Green, Franklin, and Gray. I've taught kindergarten, middle school, and high school, academic subjects from math to language arts to social studies, a little PE here and there. So, I'm really getting a picture of what's going on in the district. This year, you are going to hear me speak a lot about my feeling that we spend too much money on personnel in this building here and not enough personnel in schools. Right? You're going to hear me say that certain positions like IT should all be done by teachers who have students helping to do IT in non-confidential areas. There's so much that we could teach our students by getting personnel out of this building and into schools and having them perform these functions, as well as teaching students and mentoring students to perform them. But while I'm talking about bureaucracy I don't want, I want to praise your decision to hire an ombudsman. I think that is a vital step towards improving relationship between the community and the district. But now, even though we're getting more money, I still think until we have enough money to fund everything, it's vital that we look at priorities and we try and spend as much money as possible in ways that directly affect student outcomes. And, well, for example, I don't think that testing the SBAC, I mean, I've told you before that even the SAT is not as good a predictor as teachers' grades. I would much rather see us spend the money on training teachers to give more consistent grades than on testing. And of course, when we test, there's the opportunity cost, all the things that we don't teach our students in that time, the use of the laboratory, the computer labs and so forth for testing. Oops. I really messed that up. Let's see. Here's another important one. We need teacher training that really benefits teachers rather than fitting the ideas and convenience of administrators. I can't tell you how many times any veteran teacher has been told when to go to a room, given 100 or 200 pages of material. Someone gets paid a lot of money to talk about 20 or 25 of those pages, and then the teachers are left on their own to implement whatever it is. So, in any event, as I come talk with you this year and submit written information, I'm going to start to give you more detailed ideas about how I think things should change.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have Scott Overton and Ben Barber.
My name is Benjamin Barber, and that is B-A-R-B-E-R. The reason why I've come to today and without much preparation, I'm sorry, I could have probably done better had I been aware, is that I believe that we should perhaps spend some resources in trying to find whether or not we can improve student outcomes in mathematics and science by implementing stuff that I myself and others have been working on in what is known as the Maker Education Initiative. And this initiative is meant to accompany regular science education with applied science principles such as how to engineer and produce things of either artistic or useful societal purpose. My background in this was I previously was a science educator with Omsi. My wife is a student, master's education student for special ed and has done language arts education. And moreover, I have taught first robotics championships teams and have also helped teach at Portland State amateur robotics teams as well. I have some accompanying documents that have examples of budgets and how much it would take to implement something like this, but I feel as if the school that I was teaching at MLC really seemed to enjoy this curriculum and these principles. We had students who were doing things like growing genetically engineered glow-in-the-dark plants, remote-controlled cockroaches, building robots, making video games. And my classes consisted of intricate lectures, which are content-heavy, followed the next period or the next class by labs and hands-on activities that go over the stuff that was there previously. I had kids that had been diagnosed with developmental disabilities whose parents made that my classes were the only classes they were excited about and paid attention to because it fits not only their self-expression, but also their goal-oriented and mastery skills. So, I hope that maybe there is a chance that we could develop some sort of scientific study to compare control groups of regular science instruction and those that have the regular science instruction accompanied by the applied science skills, such as, you know, how to engineer and produce real-world solutions to real-world problems and how to express oneself artistically by using the tools of the 21st century. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm Scott Overton, O-V-E-R-T-O-N. Coacher Atkins, Superintendent Smith, and board members, hello, and thank you for your continued work and dedication for the students of Portland. It's always wonderful. As you know, I'm the Oregon PTA, I'm now a vice president of leadership, and I'm an active member of the Grant High School PTA Board. We're here again to revisit our budget, luckily for a positive and not a cutting fix this time around. However, I would be remiss if I did not remind you all that having all the resources available at the time of budget preparation leads to a maximal program for the year. And this is at least the third time, I believe, that I've been involved in seeing there's adjustments after the fact in a positive way. It's, I know that understanding tax revenues probably is not something that we can do a lot about, but certainly understanding the cost of doing business and understanding the cost of what our employees are is certainly something that I think we can do a better job. Also, a more accurate count for the number of students in a school building, it's an ongoing thing since I began this process 16 years ago, that the number of students has always been underestimated at the building in which my students, my children were apart, which means you then have to make an adjustment after classes are set, and it's not ideal. So, I really think we could do better about that. For example, at Grant High School, we have at least 18 and a half teachers who have workload of 165 to 185 students, and it's in seven areas across the board, four in science, four and a half in math, two in social studies, two in Spanish, three in English, two or more in health, and one in art. So, how do we fix this with a little bit of FTE? I mean, do you want to have a, find a person who's qualified to teach Spanish, English, and art? You know, I mean, it's kind of a weird position to put people in at this time. So, I challenge us at this point to face a better time the next time around. I'd also like to request more money be supplied for the consolidated budgets. New classes require supplies, books, and technology. At the PTA grant, we have been hit heavily already for support. The PSU ecology and an English class don't have books, curriculum in some other classes, manipulations in a math class, technology for a classroom, all have been asked for these new classes that were developed without any sort of money to supply that. So, at this time, and I'm sure that PTAs throughout PPS are being hit similarly at this time. So, at this time, we are out asking PTA members to support the levy renewal with a $7 million kind of total budget. So, how do we explain that we're using this, we're not using this money to fund positions and programs, but we still need more money? So, I just think about how that will look as we're out working for the levy renewal.
Thank you very much.
Lastly, we have Mike Rosen.
Hi. Are you ready?
Yep. Go ahead.
Hi. I'm Mike Rosen, and I'm here representing the Parents Coalition, which is a group of Portland parents that believe a full day of high school is essential for all students. Thanks to taxpayers and the improving economy, the news is good tonight. We have more money than expected and an opportunity to restore needed school services. In addition to the superintendent's three priorities, which we wholeheartedly support, we support filling whatever funding gaps exist at the elementary and middle school level, and we're asking that the superintendent and the school board fulfill its promise to fully fund high schools. This means providing an adequate number of teachers to allow students to have a full day of school and provide a robust curriculum that will make this a priority for all students. Please fully staff high schools as promised. All summer, the Parents Coalition has asked for this, and PPS has claimed that they don't have the resources, but here we are two weeks after the start of school and millions of dollars appear. In addition, we need to allocate student support to high schools on a modified per-student basis. Whether you're a small or large high school, a base level of support is provided. Larger high schools need more campus monitors to improve safety and the well-being of students and teachers. They need more vice principals to improve teacher support, which includes coaching and evaluation. And they need more media and IT specialists and accounting support to improve the functional operations of high schools. We also need allocation of operational funds for new teachers, textbooks, projectors, whiteboards, art supplies. Many newly hired teachers are without even the most basic curriculum support tools. And lastly, we need more fiscal accountability and transparency. Last January, $20 million unexpectedly appeared due to better-than-expected revenue from local property tax and savings and employee retirement costs. Now, an additional $17 million appears as a result of the same factors. Without better revenue projections, we miss the opportunity to optimize the budget by working with principals in the community before the start of school. Without better budget predictions, we lose public confidence in the district's fiscal responsibility and adversely impact public support of future revenue-generating measures. It also causes a lack of meaningful public input on budget decisions, and the late allocation of dollars for new teacher hiring continues to place PPS in a less effective hiring position, meaning we continue to hire when all the best teachers are taken by other schools. And finally, we can't motivate students to forecast for full schedule, especially in the upper grades, if we don't have the resources prior to forecasting to create interesting and sought-after curriculum. So, in closing, please consider more direct investment in high schools and less investment in an already sufficient contingency fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, Superintendent Smith, before we move on to the agenda, did you have, you had an update you wanted to share, so we had some good news?
I did. I just wanted to do recognition of a student who was actually covered in the Oregonian today, Theodore Motz, who scored a perfect score on both the SAT and the ACT entrance exams and is the first person in Oregon to achieve perfect scores on both tests. So, I just want to say a big call-out for her. The other thing I'd say, though, part of what the Oregonian also covered is what a well-rounded student she is and all the other things she does and the community service and kinds of things she's engaged in, that she, the pole vaulter, she does the constitution team, she coordinates a tutoring program, and she is a member of the superintendent's Student Advisory Committee. So, I'm just going to say this should be an encouragement to those of you who are still thinking about whether you want to join Super SAC this year. So, anyway, congratulations to Theodore.
And maybe our student representative can remind our audience when that group meets and how you can join it.
Yeah. So, our next meeting is going to be next Wednesday, or Wednesday, the 24th, at 4:15. We'll meet at the BESC right out here, and then we all walk up to the conference room. You can join it just by coming, show up, and it's going to be fun.
So, it's open to any high school student?
Yeah. So, any high schooler can come to this, and then from there, we select a smaller committee to meet with the superintendent, but as of right now, it's open to everyone.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Great. Okay. So, back to the agenda. So, tonight, we're going to get an update on the 2013-14 ending fund balance, the 2014-15 beginning fund balance, and our budget calendar for the coming year. So, Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce the item?
I would. And Ryan Dutcher, who is our interim CFO, and David Wine, our deputy CFO, are going to do the presentation tonight and walk us through some of the detail about when we know what and how our budget calendar rolls out and how the complexity of projections that you just heard people testifying about trying to get their heads around, how, when do we know what and how do we know what we can make, how to make sense of it? These guys are going to walk us through it. Ryan.
Good evening. Coacher Atkins, board members, and Superintendent Smith. Tonight, we want to talk to you about the budget, and more specifically, we want to talk through the budget, the budget calendar. We manage our budget generation through a calendar every year, and we're going to share that at a pretty good level of detail, so we appreciate your attention on that piece. We also, we want to directly address the fact that our ending fund balance is $16.8 million more than we budgeted, so we're going to walk through a good reconciliation of what the root causes are behind that. And then, when we start to think about how we want to deploy those resources, and it's really, it's a great position to be in, we want to set that in the context of what we know about 2014, 2015, and then think a little bit about the future and what we know about the budget environment for the next year as well. We're going to next go into a little bit more detail, and David's going to talk about the school staffing update because it's important to think about what we're doing today and how that fits in with what we do with these resources. And then lastly, we'll wrap up with some recommendations and then talk about when you'll see the next update for the budget process as well, as it is an ongoing process. We've earned more every day throughout the year, and how we bring this data back to you is going to be important. So, with that, I'll turn it over to David. He can walk through the calendar.
Thank you, Ryan. And we're going to pause for questions at a couple of points in the proceedings, so we'll pause after the budget calendar, some questions on that, and then after we've done the context piece, we'll pause then, and there'll be an opportunity for questions at the end as well. So, budget calendar. You, in your board packet, got a detailed page and a half budget calendar, which, as I believe you had requested, and I want to acknowledge a couple of things before I get into detail on this. First thing to acknowledge is this is a more detailed budget calendar than we've published in the past. We think, as we've heard speakers tonight say, and as I know you're concerned about, we want to be as clear as we can be about the annual process that we go through because there are a number of things here that happen every year, and we want to try and be clear about that. And the other thing to acknowledge is that whilst this is labeled a calendar for the development of the 2015-16 budget, there's really three years' worth of activity, or there's three years being reflected in this simultaneously. So, during the current year, we're going to be closing out last year, which is 2013-14. We're going to be implementing, executing, and updating this year, 2014-15, and we're going to be developing the budget for next year, 2015-16. And each of those three years, there are things related to them interwoven in this calendar. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge upfront is, you know, we're including in the calendar now the idea of estimating the ending fund balance in the summer and then confirming, like we are tonight, what our pre-audit estimate of ending fund balance is, so we can be as transparent about that as possible. Previously, we really didn't come back and talk about ending fund balance. When I was sat up there for eight years, we never really had that conversation as explicitly, in part because we were in a different fiscal environment. So, for years and years and years, we were making cuts, drawing down reserves to mitigate the amount of cuts that we made, and then in most of those years, our ending fund balance ended up being more than we had budgeted. It refilled the pot to allow us to continue to manage and move forward, but we were never in a position where we had extra dollars that we could actually spend on anything. That's changed in the last two years with the overall improving fiscal climate, so now we're in the fortunate position where we do actually get to think about, does this create an opportunity for us to spend some money immediately? And that's different than a situation we've been in for most of the last 10, 15, or even 20 years. So, in terms of the detailed calendar that you have in front of you, I broke it, in terms of slides, I broke it into sort of three seasons. In the summer and the fall, we, in July and August, we are updating school staffing allocations. It's the second round of updates. So, staff are working with principals to problem-solve places where the allocation they've received so far doesn't fit for scheduling or the number of students that they expect and so forth. The other thing that's important to acknowledge about July and August is we're still spending prior-year dollars in July and August. That sounds kind of intuitive because our fiscal year-end is June 30th, and you might think, June 30th, we're done. Accounting rules are more arcane than that, and we're actually still booking expenditures in July and August for the prior year. We don't actually close the books on the June 30th year-end until the end of August, beginning of September, in preparation for the audit. And that's important, I think, to understand in the context of, you know, when do we know numbers about where the year ends up? We're actually still booking expenditures in July and August. In the fall, like we're doing now, we're going to publish the budget calendar each year. We're revising estimates for the prior-year ending fund balance. We're providing updates on the current year budget, so what's happening in 2014-15 this year, and continuing staffing allocation to schools. We are, we will be bringing you in October, a recommendation for appointments to the Citizens Budget Review Committee, the CBRC, and you, as a board, will be beginning work sessions at board meetings and at work sessions where you get presentations from staff on programs and services, some of which have budget implications, as indeed the presentation on September 9th for dual-language immersion, where you heard staff talking about plans and the possibilities of what might happen next year and potential budget implications for those. So, that's what happens in the summer and the fall.
Just for the record, we didn't, the potential budget implications were not revealed on September 9th.
That's absolutely correct. But there was an outline of program expansions and reconsiderations that would have implications for a budget if those are implemented, and a sounding from the board about whether or not that was something that you thought was worthy of future consideration. In the winter, starting in November, you're continuing work sessions. The district staffing team, which is a staff group that is working on developing recommendations to the superintendent on school staffing, begins their work. The budget leadership team, which is a staff team that is looking at recommendations to the superintendent on central allocated budgets, is doing its work. We've included in this calendar in November and December, budget prioritization discussions and exercises with a number of community partners, like we did in the development of this year's budget, and we've scheduled, we've penciled in a work session with the board for a similar exercise on December 2nd. We will, in November, be coming to the board with a budget update for the current year, and the timing of that in November is driven by the point at which we have a better sense of property tax collections, local option revenue, and student enrollment. We will be completing the audit of the last year's financial statements and producing a budget amendment, which will come to the board in January, which will officially reconcile the end of the last fiscal year and include any changes to the budget that the superintendent is recommending for your consideration. And in January, we will have a forecast for the next year, 15-16, with our best estimate at that point of what the revenue and expenditure outlook might be. And traditionally, that's also been the point at which we've tried to identify whether we have a deficit, whether we have an investable surplus, and what the outlook for the coming year is. Then, in the spring, March 10th is when we have scheduled provisionally the superintendent to do what she did this March, which is present a school staffing plan to you and outline a framework for a budget proposal. The following day is when the initial school staffing allocation is made and school staffing begins, and that process continues through March and April. March 11th through March 30th, we will be looking to schedule listening sessions for the superintendent and board members with community partners and other audiences to hear people's feedback on the budget framework that she has outlined. There'll be another budget update on the current year in March, the timing of that being in part driven by when we find out from the state how their reconciliation of the last year, 2013-14's state school fund calculations are going to impact us. And then on March 31st, the superintendent will propose the budget to the board as the budget committee. In April and May, the board will hold public hearings. State law requires that you hold at least one, and last year, you held a second one in a language other than English. And we will also continue updates on staffing allocation in schools. May 12th, the Citizens Budget Review Committee performs its number-one obligation, which is to report to you on the superintendent's proposed budget. May 26th is when the board would be scheduled acting as the budget committee to approve the budget. We, staff would then submit that approved budget to the Tax Supervisory and Conservation Commission, which body will- Commission, which body will hold a hearing on June 23rd, the same night as the board's governing body would vote to adopt the budget, impose taxes, and appropriate funds for the following year. In July, we would do a preliminary estimate of how the year's ending fund balance looks, do a second update during the summer of staffing allocation to schools, and now we're back, essentially, to the beginning of the cycle, and we begin all over again with a pre-audit estimate of 14-15, and you could turn to the front, just change all of the years by one, and we're back in the cycle. So that essentially is our, as I say, fairly detailed budget calendar for the next 12 to 14 months. And at this point, we'll pause and ask.
Yeah, so pause, pause for questions.
Pause for questions at this point.
I think Director Kurler actually had one earlier that you've been patiently waiting.
Oh, okay, just a couple. Why would, so, we pass a budget in June.
You adopt a budget in June.
Yeah. Why in July are we looking at ending fund balances? Wouldn't we want to do that before the budget?
It's a question of when we have the information available. As I said earlier, part of the challenge is, we don't have, we're still in, you know, July and August reconciling what's happened during the year. We're still booking expenditures and tallying numbers, so...
But are there ways to estimate it? I guess the question is, are there ways to estimate both, you know, both from, on a macro scale, both from what the economy's doing? So, you know, we have quarterly estimates coming out from the state, and reports from the county, and, you know, quarterly. So we should have visibility into that. And we have spending on a quarterly basis, and so we should have some visibility into that. And so, from a budget standpoint, wouldn't we want to have some sort of forecast in terms of, you know, a little more visibility in terms of before, in terms of the ending balance?
So I think the dilemma, the balance that we're trying to strike when it comes to forecasts and estimates is, the earlier we do it, the more variability there is, and the less comfort we have recommending fiscal action based on that. So the more uncertainty there is about the numbers, the less comfortable we are recommending to the superintendent that we spend the money until we have some level of certainty about whether we've got it. And that's the balance. And, you know, it's a judgment call about how soon is too soon and when is the right time.
Right.
And I will say, I mean, I do, you know, we're doing more and doing it earlier than we've done it before, and I think as we continue to do this, we'll evolve and get better at it, and have a higher level of confidence in what we're doing. But we're really trying to balance the reliability with timeliness.
Right. And then also, I mean, just to be fair, I mean, you do estimate what the ending balance is, right?
Yes.
So that's on the record.
Yeah.
The, in terms of, going back to a comment you made about, we're now in a situation where the revenues are going up. And so this is a relatively new issue from an ending balance, but I would be curious to know the last seven, eight years, just from your knowledge, I mean, you don't have to be exact tonight, but is it the same order of magnitude on a relative basis that we're missing the ending balance?
And I don't, I'm not comfortable pulling that out of my head. I think there's a couple of things, that there's a compounding factor in terms of what's changed. It's not just that revenue's improving, it's that the revenue and, that we're in a positive space to begin with. And when the economy is improving like it is, we're not, everything is accelerating in the right direction, so whether it's local option, whether it's property tax receipts, all of those things are moving in the right direction. And that's creating, if you, I mean, it's positive momentum on top of positive momentum. And I think that is, that's working to our benefit, and we will continue to sort of, you know, do our best to evaluate what opportunities that creates for us.
Okay, thank you. That would be good if you could get that.
So, Director Kurler?
I had a quick question about the March 10th date. The big deal for our principals is when the staffing is released to the schools, and we did a lot of work in the last teacher contract so that we can actually get out earlier. Is that March 10th date earlier than when we release staffing this year?
Yes, it is. It's a week, it's a week earlier. And the one thing I, I'm glad you asked me that question, because there's one caveat to this calendar that I should have said that I didn't. This year, it was March 17th, so March 10th is a week, a full week earlier than that. The caveat is that 2015-16 is the first year of the biennium. And unlike this year, where we had relative certainty about our state funding, we don't have certainty about our state funding for next year. So this calendar that we've published here is predicated on the basis that we have some level of assurance about what our state funding is going to look like, so that we can, you know, have a degree of comfort with the estimates, because the margin of error is greater the first year in the biennium. And we have, at this point, it's way too early to know how soon we're going to get clarity about numbers in terms of state appropriation. So if we're able to, if we're able to hit this timeline, then, you know, we will be out, we'll be out earlier than we have.
That's great, thank you.
And actually, this year was the first year we did the budget in two parts, where we did the staffing plan and released it so we could go out early, and then continued to converse about the rest of the budget, and could have enough community process on the rest of the budget, but still go early with staffing. So that was a new thing this year, and we're repeating it.
Yeah.
That's wild.
I'm glad you threw that caveat out there, because I was going, my question was going to be if this calendar then forces the legislature to have their decision made by March 10th, so that we could move on.
That'd be good.
Of course, knowing that that wasn't the case. And in our past experience, right, is that even with a legislature that has been really proactive on state funding for schools, it seems to sometimes get caught in the politics that happens down in Salem. So I just want to point out that I appreciate it. I noticed that it was a week earlier, and we are trying to push this earlier. Appreciate Director Kurler's questions about, you know, how far are we missing? Is it within the similar range? Appreciate the idea that it can be compounding, right? You have positive news, and then all of a sudden you get more positive news from other pieces, and all of a sudden your magnitude increases. And I just, I appreciate, I feel like since the time I've been on the board, you've been coming back more often with, so I think we heard a comment tonight, this is the third or fourth time we've heard you come back. And I think that's actually indicative of the responsiveness, of how quickly we want to get this money into schools and out into staffing, so we don't find ourselves behind. And I have the fortune in my work to work with other school districts, and all this year, one of the most common things I heard is, gull darn you, PPS, you keep swooping up all the teachers. So the fact that we were out earlier, it made a big difference to the staff that we were able to hire. Point taken about now, if we're out hiring now, at this point, we want to obviously hire as much as we can, as early as we can. But I appreciate the fiscal prudence that this has been, being cautious, realizing how quickly economies can turn, and the fact that we are continuing to accelerate our getting the staffing to schools. So I'm appreciative of that.
Eunice, did you have?
So I just, maybe you could just walk us through, so if you were, say, to be less fiscally prudent or cautious, and to say, let's do, just hypothetically. No, I'm just trying to think, because if the concern is that we should have allocated more staff, because we should have known that it was going to be okay, and that we could have afforded, and the money would be there. But if that, if one did that, and then the revenue didn't come in, can you just walk us through what that, what would we do in that situation? What would that, what would the implications of that be?
Sure.
Can I start? One piece, I think, one piece to keep in mind, and this is, I think this is unique to PPS and to public agencies as well, is that we have, you know, we have, when we appropriate the funds against our budget, we cannot overspend that appropriation by a dollar, and we have to underspend. So that kind of puts us in a situation, and I would argue this is a responsible situation, where we tend to be fairly conservative on that. So to answer the first part of your question, we're going to, we're going to err on the side, because there is so much uncertainty. We're trying to predict the future sixteen, eighteen months in advance.
Right.
And we're going to usually err on the side of being cautious on that, because we cannot go over. But if we were, and I'll let David add to this as well, but if we were to move ahead, if we were to be too aggressive on that, and the important piece when it comes to the state school fund, it's a set amount. So even if the tax revenues turn out to be higher, the state is going to come back, and there's usually a bit of a lag, the state's going to come back and adjust their piece of it down on the appropriation, so it's going to bring us back to that same amount. So if we're, if we celebrate too soon, and we think we have excess funds, and we hire a number of teachers, and then it turns out the state makes the adjustment, and we actually don't have those dollars, that's a level of thrash and confusion we would not want to subject the district, our schools, our principals to. So we're going to, we're going to be fairly cautious and avoid that situation at all costs.
And so, to that point, you recommend taking five million and putting it in the reserve for that adjustment.
Yeah, that's exactly.
And so, my question on that is, is that pretty slam dunk that that's, the state's going to, do we know the formula well enough to know that that's what we're going to?
Maybe we should just hold that thought until we get to that part of the presentation, unless you want to just go ahead.
No, can we hold that until we get, we will speak to that when we get there. But to Coach Atkins, to your question, you know, what if we were fiscally not as prudent as we want to be? There's, I guess, three things I'd say. One is, bear in mind, we added 180 teachers in the budget this year. So we added a lot already. We, in part, did that by spending down reserves by 13.7 million dollars. If we had done both of those things and added another, some more teachers, thinking that something was going to happen, which then did not happen, we have to find that money from somewhere, because as Ryan said, we cannot, we cannot, you know, appropriate more, we have to stay within our appropriation. So we would have to find the money from somewhere else. We'd either cut it from somewhere else, or we would draw down reserves even further.
Below the 3% that...
Below the 3.9 that we'd already gone down to.
Or the 3% that we have to hold ourselves to.
Or, you know, at risk of the policy. And then the other thing about spending down reserves, and we'll talk more about this in a little bit too, is, you know, it's okay the first year to use the reserves, but the next year, in order to maintain those services, that money has to come from somewhere. And you can only spend reserves down once, and unless they rebuild, you can't keep doing it, because at some point, there's nothing left. So part of what we're balancing...
Unless it's a one-time expansion.
Unless it's a one-time thing, but adding, you know, more teachers is not usually a one-time thing. So that's part of the balance as well, is when you're spending down reserves, it's balancing the imperative to get things out into schools, and at the same time, addressing the issue, and again, we're going to talk about this a little bit more in a moment, addressing the issue of what does that mean for the subsequent year, and so on and so forth.
Yeah. I just, just one more thing before you move on. I just really appreciate your bringing historical perspective of what happened when we were in the cut, cut, cut years, was that there, yes, there wasn't any fund balance, and I appreciate that we'll find out what that was. But there was an amount that just went in to try to help rebuild the cuts. So it just, it just happened in that less visible way. So, anyway, let's move on. Thanks.
Okay. So I'll start, I'll talk just briefly about the state school fund, and I spoke about this earlier, that it is, it's a combination of two different funding sources, and one is the permanent rate of property taxes plus the state appropriation. And to give you some context for, you know, how meaningful this is for the district, this makes up about 75% of our general fund, which is about $500 million. And as I mentioned before, the important thing is that there's a balancing that goes on at the state to make sure that's continually in balance. But the subtlety is, there's always a timing. If we realize that tax revenues are going to be higher, there's a bit of a timing in terms of when the state adjusts the other side of the equation. The other piece that, and to kind of pull us up to a little bit higher level, when you think about the budget, we are, it's a multi-year timeline. Any given year spans a multi-year timeline. The beginning pieces, we're making assumptions and doing our best work to think about both the revenue side and the expense, the needs for expenses in the upcoming year. We're making adjustments and reforecasting the budget in the current year, and then afterwards, all the adjustments we're making as we work through the audit process, and as the state works through any of the revenue adjustments. So it could lead to, if you look at the graphic on the screen, if we just focus on the payment piece alone, if you look at 2014-15 as an example, we're receiving payments, in some cases, up to a full year after, after that year is closed. So you can imagine the adjustments that that takes along the way. So one of the things that we thought was also important, as we think about 2014-2015, is the context for the budget. And we'll go into this in a little more detail, but for the most part, when we think about how the budget is allocated across the state, and how we think about it across PPS, it's multiple factors, it's fairly complex, but for the most part, it's based upon a weighted student count. And also, for 2014-2015, we do our best work to estimate what those individual line items are, but there are certain pieces in the budget that, you know, I can tell you today will move, some will move for us, and some will move against us in the budget, and there are a couple that we know about that we're keeping a close eye on. And one, as a particular example, are the actual teacher salaries. So we knew we were hiring a lot of new teachers this year. We put, before we know who the teachers are and what kind of salaries we're going to pay, we put some assumptions in terms of what those are going to be. As we start to hire those teachers, we're able to start to understand and kind of plug in by name what those teacher salaries are. That's going to create a little bit of a delta, could be a plus, could be a minus, as we roll through the year. Other pieces that I think will probably resonate, any kind of PERS adjustments and PERS uncertainty, and then any of the local option taxes as well on the revenue side. So and also, if we think back on 2014-2015, I think, you know, we really made a really strong commitment to invest in the schools, and the vast majority of our resources went to resources in the schools as they should. We did this in part by spending down our reserves, and more specifically, we spent on our reserves by 13.7 million dollars. Some of that was one-time spending. So 4.7 million of that was one-time investments, doesn't necessarily commit the district to ongoing expenses. But the balance of it, the $9 million, that's an amount, as we think about 2015-2016, we either have to make sure that that $9 million makes its way into the budget, so we can continue to provide that same level of services, or we have to make some trade-offs to make sure that we can live within our means. So basically, what that means is, money we have to find to keep doing the things we're doing as we move from this year to the next year. This, all these changes pulled our reserves down to 3.9%, or 19.6 million. And as I think was referenced before, board policy is 3%, and then we have an aspirational goal of 5%. So then there are a couple things, we think forward to the future 2015-2016, because I think it's easy to get caught up in the 12 months of the current fiscal year, but those are all commitments that we're making for future years. So when we think about 15-16, there are certain things that we already know are going to impact our budget that aren't in our current run rate. One is the fact, on the expense side, that we would expect that inflation will continue at a 3%, nice round assumption of a 3% clip. Our budget is large enough that that translates into real dollars, and that's $15 million for our budget. We also know that we need to fund full-day kindergarten, which is another $11 million. And then the $9 million that I referenced on the pages before for ongoing services, that's another $9 million. So if we just kind of think of it in broad brushstrokes, we can pretty easily identify $35 million that we'll need for our 2015-2016 budget. So that's clearly the expense side of the ledger. This is before, I want to point out that this is before we add anything new. So this is just to kind of maintain our current level of activity and our current level of support. And when we get to the point, we start to talk about how we want to deploy the...
Well, that's not quite true with full kindergarten, is it? Or is it?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. So, full-day kindergarten is, next year is going to be the same it is this year?
So this year, we're funding kindergarten, half of it is funded in the general fund, the other half is funded either by Title I dollars or parents paying tuition. We cannot, next year, we cannot charge tuition. So our option, our only option is to have full-day kindergarten, our only realistic option is to have full-day kindergarten funded by the general fund. So we're going to have to find $11 million. That's going to cost us $11 million. We're going to need $11 million of additional money... of additional money over and above what we get this year in order to have that second half day.
But more parents are gonna have access to, to full-day kindergarten next year than they are this year?
Mo, I think currently ninety, somewhere in the high ninety percent of families are in full-day kindergarten existing. We'll, we'll, we'll see a slight increase, but most of our families are either benefiting from Title I or paying tuition.
Okay. So the, the other piece is, as we think about, um, the, the ending fund balance and any kind of, uh, ongoing, you'll see in our recommendations, we're definitely recommending some, um, you know, some ongoing investments, but that, that'll add to this, that'll add to this tension in terms of what we need to fund in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, just a point to keep in mind. Okay? So that's, that's clearly the expense side. So on, on the revenue side, and we, we do, we would expend, expect that we'd get, um, higher revenue and, um, uh, you know, legislature may and likely would increase funding. We get about eight percent of the state school fund, but at this point, it's, it's too early to tell exactly what that'll mean. Uh, we, uh, continue to, to believe that our permanent rate property taxes will increase by about three percent. Uh, the local option will increase as values go up as well and as compression unwinds. And then lastly, um, the local option renewal if it passes, uh, could add about four million dollars for our budget. So there's some, there is some relief from that point of view. Okay? So at this point, um, uh, we'll, we'll stop for any, any questions about, uh, two thousand fourteen, fifteen and context for fifteen, sixteen before we go into, because the next piece we wanna talk about is kind of the explanations of, of, of kind of why the ending fund balance is larger than what we expected.
Questions, Chris?
Mine's not a, so much a question as it is just a, a reminder to, um, to our families that, um, while there's a state mandate for full-day kindergarten this next year, um, I think that many Oregonians assume that means the state legislature will step up and fund that. Um, and I've heard from at least two legislative individuals who, um, are working really hard to convince me that I should not assume that that is true. Um, and so I just wanna let folks know that if, if you think, well, wow, they mandated, of course they would step up, um, that it's really important that we hold them to, um, funding that mandate because it's really important for our families. And even what I would consider funding a simple thing as, as full-day kindergarten isn't something we can assume from the legislature.
Thank you for making that point.
Good point. And so I'm just, I wanna get even more clarity on the kindergarten thing. Um, so next year, we will not be able to use Title I, e- e- any federal money to do full-day kindergarten?
So the only way we could use Title I money to pay for kindergarten would be if we did not offer full-day kindergarten in non-Title I schools. Because you cannot pay for something with Title I dollars if you're paying for it anywhere else with general fund dollars. And we cannot charge tuition for tuition, for kindergarten starting next year. So we can't charge tuition and we can't use general fund money to pay in non-Title I schools and Title I dollars in Title I schools. So we only, we have, I believe, two choices. We pay for it all through the general fund, or we only offer full-day kindergarten in Title I schools and pay for it using Title I dollars. And to all families in non-Tile I schools, we say, sorry, full-day kindergarten isn't available, we're wearing it every half-day. That's, that's a fiscal option. I'm not sure it's a practical political option or even an educational outcome that we would choose.
The good news is that the four and a half million dollars that was Title I dollars that were being used for full-day kindergarten is gonna be shifted back to Title I to support high-powery programs.
Right. Um, as we're developing the budget for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, for next year, we have an opportunity to identify things that we can do in those Title I schools with that money that has currently been servicing, been supporting full-day kindergarten. And that's, that's a great opportunity.
That's what I was trying to get at. So then the, so of that eleven million, um, how much is Title I and how much is tuition?
Four, four and a half million is Title I and the remainder is tuition.
So from, just from this budget discussion, that, uh, because that, that's what I call a backfill. Maybe I'm being too loose about that, but, um, for the budget discussion, it's, it's not eleven, it's, it would be, uh, eleven minus four point five essentially.
Well, in the general fund, it's eleven.
Because Title I's not part of the general fund?
Title I is not part of the general fund.
I, I get that.
So in the general fund, we gotta find that eleven million dollars. And we have an opportunity to, to do some new stuff in the general fund, but it, we can't take, just so we're clear, we can't take something that we're doing in the general fund this year and shift it to the Title I budget and pay for it with Title I dollars. We can't do that.
I understand.
It would be, it would be a logical sort of budget move, but it's illegal.
Right. But if we backfill the general fund with eleven million, we do have another four and a half in Title I.
Absolutely.
Right.
Which is, which is an exciting opportunity, yeah.
So that is exciting. Right. Yeah. Other comments or questions on this piece? Okay.
Okay. So let's move on to the, the next piece. Let's talk about the, how we got here. So, um, I wanna talk a little about the, the reconciliation for the, for the ending fund balance. So the largest piece, um, as, as you, as you read in your board materials, the largest piece of what drove our ending fund balance, uh, to be eighteen point four million dollars higher than our budget was the fact that revenues came in higher than budget. And more specifically, uh, we saw nine point five million dollars of, um, you know, I'll, I'll call it good news, um, largely because of the higher property tax collections, which were nine point seven million dollars. And as a, as a next level detail, there are a couple of things underneath this. Um, first of all, we recognized about five million dollars, um, of additional tax, um, revenue. And these are numbers that we share with the state. The tax revenues come directly to the district. We share that number with the state. The state makes adjustments on this, on the direct side. So we shared that number with the state. Uh, we expected that to be mostly offset by these lower, uh, state school fund payments. In the current year, that wasn't the case, mostly because , uh, we also received an adjustment from two thousand twelve, thirteen to the tune of three million dollars plus that increased that amount. So we expected that to wash out to zero. It turned out to be a, close to a positive five million dollar number. So that was one of our surprises.
Why?
Because, so part of it was from a, 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 a priori adjustment for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
You mean an adjustment from the state?
From the state, that's correct.
So the state catching up and adjusting and changing things. I mean, we've had years where we've had to draw down reserves mid-year and make cuts, you know, because the state has changed. So it's just the constant.
And, and in this case, it turned out that it was, it was in, and you'll see, you'll see the trend here. Every single thing that moved in the budget, it moved in our favor, contributed to this, to this, you know, to higher.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, this leaves us a situation of, of, you know, giving us more resources. Um, the other piece, so, so even beyond that point, property taxes can, property tax collections continue to be, to be strong throughout the year. So at this point, we believe we have about a five million dollar, uh, this explains also another five million dollar of our, um, of our, um, of the increase over our ending fund balance. On this, on the second five million dollar piece, we fully expect that the state will, will make an adjustment and take that piece of it back. The uncertainty is that we won't know that until spring of two thousand fifteen. So you'll see when we get to our recommendations, we're gonna recommend that we put that in reserves also and we hold that back to cover.
I don't have a question. I just wanna highlight that again.
Okay.
The state has a mechanism that if we realize more revenue than anticipated in our tax revenue, the state has a correcting factor that winds up correcting for that and readjusting that.
That's correct.
Taking money.
Taking it back.
Taking the money back.
That's correct.
To correct. Or in twelve, thirteen, it sounds like it went, it grew in favor, that they want, they also collected more and they continued to push it up. But there is a self-correcting factor that we have some guess at, but can you talk a little bit about?
Sure.
How we, how would we predict that?
And, and before, and I'll, I will let David answer that question. The important piece too is that, um, it, it sometimes spans over years, which makes it more difficult.
Twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen.
So I'll, I'll let David.
You know, you, you hit on, on a really important part. So just to quickly go back to talk about the state school fund. Two sources of revenue, local property, permanent rate tax collections from every district and the state appropriation. Conceptually, they go into one bucket. State uses that formula mostly around, uh, weighted student numbers with some adjustments to allocate that out to the districts. Physically, the property tax collections comes directly to the district and the state sends money to top up what you've received directly to the number that they've determined that you should get. And they revise that estimate more times than you'd care to know, starting before the year starts all the way through the year. And their final reconciliation of that state school fund number for a particular year is about nine months after the year ends. So they finally determine what the state school fund number for two thousand twelve, thirteen years in about April of two thousand fourteen, by which time we're already into the next year. So they make a final adjustment in the subsequent year. And that, that plays out in, in how we try and estimate, you know, what's happening here. Um, and, you know, the allocation formula is complicated as well because it's, it's based, as I said, primarily on weighted student numbers, not on enrollment, but on ADMW, which is average daily membership. So on any particular day, we know we've got this many kids enrolled, but the actual formula is based on how many kids attend school each day through the course of the year, which is partly why it takes them a while to figure out what the actual calculation is, because they have to have the attendance data for the whole year and then they have to reconcile that for the whole state. If our student numbers are higher than we thought they were going to be, that's a positive sign, but not a guarantee of more money. Because if our student numbers go up and everybody else's go up, if everybody else's go up more than ours go up as a percentage, we're actually gonna lose money against our forecast.
So to the, to the question, so I mean, I, I get a bunch of complicated formulas, um, based upon students and enrollment and.
And taxes.
And taxes and the economy. But nonetheless, they are formulas, uh, and one can backcast and forecast. So what I'm hearing you guys say is, is your best forecast based upon these formulas and what is getting spit out of the econometric models is, is we're, is we should put five million in reserve to cover an adjustment that we fully expect will happen from the state?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes.
At this time.
But I would also say that having been on the board for twelve years, we have never before had the opportunity or the inclination to have a six percent reserve. And given the urgency to increase student achievement, I would question that. So I appreciate that you as our financial people would like us to do that. Um, that doesn't mean that we need to go along with it.
No, no. And that, to me, those, that's a different question.
We're getting into a whole other discussion.
That's a different question.
Why don't we go back to the?
But I just wanted to make sure that, 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 that five million is a number that you're, you're relatively confident today as we sit here, based upon that we're gonna get dinged in the future?
Why don't we get back to the, let you get back to the presentation, then we'll get, we can have a full discussion.
And can I have you ask, answer that question? And do you really believe that we're gonna get dinged five million dollars? Or are you just saying it could happen?
I thought I just, I mean, thank you for clarifying that.
Are you saying it could happen? Or are you saying you expect it to happen?
It, it could happen and that puts us back in the situation of, you know, with, with, with some confidence, how much, how, how far extended we, we wanna get based on something that, that could happen. And as a, as, you know, knowing my role of being, uh, you know, the conservative financial manager, I have a hard time recommending that we, we spend something we don't know is actually gonna stay with us.
And that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. So let's, let's talk about, um, a bit about the expenditure piece. So on the, on expenses also, they were, uh, below budget. And, uh, there are a couple of main pieces that were, were pretty easy to, excuse me, to understand what this was. The first piece is that healthcare and benefits were lower than budget by about six point two million dollars. And this is, this has been a pretty consistent trend across, um, across the country thankfully and across a lot of, a lot of other entities and, and public companies. Um, this is against a line item that's about a hundred and fifty million dollars for us. Um, the important piece of this is two point one million of that six point two, uh, was for teachers' healthcare benefits. And we actually offset that by higher, higher salaries. So we saved six point two, but of that six point two we saved, two point one went back to the teachers in the form of higher salaries. The other piece was that overall, all of our other expenditures, uh, were lower by about four million. And I say other because it's, it's, it's scattered across a variety of different categories across the district. But just for context, a four million dollars is a, is a very large number. But four million dollars in the context of our general fund of five hundred million dollars is, is less than, than one percent. So, uh, back to my earlier comment of knowing that we can't overspend by a dime, we're always gonna err on the side of, of underspending by a slight amount. And, you know, being able to, to rein that number in to, to less than one percent is a, is a pretty good, is a pretty good outcome. The other piece, uh, if, if you recall, um, we had set aside a transfer. We were concerned about our cash flow, our, our ability to generate enough cash flow to make our first bond fund payment. So, uh, in one of the amended budgets, we transferred, um, a million dollars to make this, this bond payment. It turned out we didn't need that. We had the cash flow to generate that. So that was another million dollars that we didn't need to, to spend that contributed to a, of, an ending fund balance that was larger than what we budgeted. So that's, that leads you to the eighteen point four million dollar for ending fund balance. Um, we had budgeted a difference, the, the ending funding, ending fund balance doesn't always tie, as, as non-intuitive as it se, as it sounds, to beginning fund balance. So we had budgeted that there would be a delta between the two of one point six million. So that leads us to a, a beginning fund balance of, of sixteen point eight.
So just quickly on, um, school staffing update. As I think you all know, we include in the allocation for school staffing, a number of, of positions, we call it the set-aside, which is a number of positions that are not allocated specifically to schools. They're held centrally and then allocated, um, on a case-by-case basis. This year, there were th, a total of thirty-seven FTE in that set-aside pool, used for core program support to respond to higher student enrollment in very specific schools, for high school scheduling support and for teacher-student loads. As of September fifth, all thirty-seven FTE have been allocated out, two to kindergarten, eighteen to K eights, thirteen to high schools and four other situations, most of which had to do with multiple locations where we had an extra administrator or some other miscellaneous things. So we are in a position where, you know, we believe that with none left and continuing to, to see further examples of these kind of things, we know that we need more of these.
Can I ask a quick question? Uh, we had a million dollars set aside in the teacher administrator work group. Is that part of the thirty-seven or separate from that?
No, separate.
And have they been allocated? That was a million dollars is equivalent to about ten, ten or eleven teachers. Has, have those been allocated?
It was a million dollars, it's separate, it has not been used yet.
At all.
At all.
No, 'cause they're developing the process by which, um, problems get identified. And it will be after we've actually gone through this process and that there'll be more individual situations that they're then appealing to the workload committee to resolve. But they've also been tasked with identifying things that actually are systemic, that we need to come up with bigger solutions to. But they've just developed the process by which somebody would identify it. And we wanna do this before we start doing that. Yeah.
That's good. That's good.
Okay. But, and, and we'll, we'll talk more about, about the, um, about the resource and where we'd like to invest. But as we, as we mentioned as well, we thought that, that the first recommendation is to build our reserves in our uncommitted contingency, um, to prepare for the uncertainty we talked about for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. So, uh, that gets us to a target of five percent. And just through the, the math would put our reserves at twenty-five point six million dollars. We'd also recommend that we hold back these, the funds, the five million dollar funds that we were talking about, um, to cover the possible year-end adjustment. We'd put that in reserves as well. And it, it's about five million dollars per point of, uh, contingency for us. So that would bring our contingency up to six percent and put thirty point six million dollars in our reserves. So that leaves us with, um, a balance of five point eight million dollars, which is the piece that we, we would recommend, um, go to ongoing and one-time investments. So first of all, um, just to, to paint the, the picture on the, on the process, our senior directors are, are busily working with the principals to identify and to prioritize, uh, different needs across our schools. So that's been really a, a focus for us. Um, at this point, and, and it's, it's early in the process, um, but at this point, uh, we would think that about eight to nine FTEs would be targeted at K through eight and the remainder would, uh, go to the high schools. And mainly, this would help the high schools respond to a couple of different needs. Uh, first would be the higher student enrollment. Uh, the second would be student scheduling needs. And the third would be to make sure that we could, uh, balance teacher-student loads. So the caveat here is today, uh, today literally was the second physical count. So our, our data is new and fresh. We'll have more details in the next day, in the next few days to come. And pulling, so, uh, a, as a result, if I pull it back up to the five point eight million dollars at the top of this page, um, next week when we have the board meeting, there's a, there's a, a small chance that, uh, when we talk about balancing between, uh, two million for FTE and three point eight for the three priorities, that there may be some small, um, adjustments between those two. The, the total amount will still be five point eight, but it could be two point one versus three point seven or something like that, just to kind of set the, set the context, because we're still working through that. But the, the important piece is really that the, the first action, the first priority is more FTEs to schools. Um, and the, the second piece is to, uh, focus on the three priorities that were identified in. is to focus on the three priorities that were identified in May, since it was after the budget was adopted, to the tune of about three point eight million dollars. And those three are to make sure that we're ensuring that all students are reading a benchmark by the end of third grade, that we're able to improve high school graduation and completion rates, and then lastly, that we're able to make steps towards eliminating disproportionality and out of school discipline between white students and students of color, and then to reducing overall out of school discipline by fifty percent.
And finally, just wanted to clarify, in the context of the budget calendar, I mentioned that in November, we would be coming with an additional budget update for the current school year. There will be additional information available in November through January. We'll be bringing a budget amendment year in January two thousand and fifteen. By then, we will have completed our analysis of school staffing costs. We'll we'll have better knowledge about healthcare renewal, particularly for teachers. We'll have better knowledge about property taxes and the local option renewal. We'll be close to a final audit outcome, and generally, a better understanding. So at that point, it's possible that we will be able to identify additional resources. Our focus now in these recommendations is on dollars that directly affect student outcomes. And it, you know, it's possible that we will have the ability to to make other recommendations. I know, for example, Mr. Porter talked about Kellogg and capital needs and things like that. It's our belief that that, you know, we're hopeful that there'll be an opportunity in the late fall, early winter, when we look at these numbers, to identify some additional resources that may or may not be appropriately diverted, or diverted, appropriately applied to capital needs and infrastructure. But collectively, we felt that, you know, at this time of the year, it's really important to focus additional dollars, to the extent that we feel comfortable spending additional money, that we focus those on things that directly affect students, as I said.
Okay, then just to just to wrap up, you know, our our recommendations, I'll just kind of roll through these these quickly. You know, so the 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 questions are, do you agree with the recommendation to increase uncommitted contingency to five percent of total expenditures, to strengthen the district's overall financial position, and provide additional resources to offset the uncertainty for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and given the need to maintain current service levels? The uncertainty of funding full day kindergarten in the general fund, and the unknown state appropriation for the coming biennium? The second question is, do you agree with the recommendation to increase reserves and uncommitted contingency by another one percent, or five million dollars, to cover the eventuality that these funds might be a reduction in our state school fund receipts when the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen prior year adjustment is calculated? The third is, do you support the idea of increasing school staffing set aside allocation by about two million dollars? And the fourth is, do you support the additional allocation of about three point eight million dollars for third grade reading, high school graduation, and reduction of disproportionate discipline?
So I would suggest that we ask clarifying questions first, and then what did we do before we adjourn tonight? I want to make sure we get a sense of where folks stand on this. And we'll be sure to reach out to the folks who weren't able to, the board members who weren't able to be here tonight, to have them win, because we'll be voting on our resolution next week. Do you want to go through what we would be voting on next week? We wouldn't be necessarily specifically, just go through the level of specificity of what we'd be voting on.
So next, the resolution would actually direct us to go ahead and allocate immediately the schools, the resources for school staffing, but you would direct me to go back and ask for specific budgets on the three priorities. So that I would go back and ask staff, who are the leads on those, to say, here are the specific things, so we'd still have more conversation about what that would be. And people have been asked already to say, what are things that are, could be implemented immediately, and to identify what the, just make a distinction between what would be ongoing and what would be one-time costs. But really, specifically, since these were the three priorities that we committed to in May, in the evaluation, what are things that could, we believe would move and get significant movement if we made those investments now? So that's what people have been tasked with.
So that's the next meeting. So clarifying questions before we move into sharing staff feedback on where we at?
So Carol, this is a question. In terms of the two million, that number just didn't come out of the air.
No, we're we've been, so like, we're in the process with of senior directors and principals really working on final levels of what do you need, because you've got increased numbers, because you've got kids who still need classes that were were not quite there yet, or kindergarten being the other big one that we're still. But it's really getting ourselves fully staffed. And it is, we're down to the final part of that. So these are based on real numbers. But again, last physical count was today, so we will know something more specific even by tomorrow, that we'll have numbers where that number could go up to saying, as Ryan just said, two point, you know, two point one, two point two million, that we need to go there, and we reduce the three amount we'd put to the three priorities.
And in terms of the high schools, does this cover fully staffed high schools for kids who want to take a full state?
So what we've been doing with high schools is the same thing we've been talking about is doing the, saying kids should be able to take eight classes in their high schools, or have the parent permission signed saying that they're choosing to do something other than that. And so the the big things that the high schools are balancing are both student load, the eight classes, and the additional numbers. So those are the factors in high school that are being balanced at this point. And usually, one of those would be the relief valve for the other. We don't have a relief valve. Our relief valve is additional investment. So that's where we're coming back and looking to do all of those.
So that fully, in in your view, fully funds the high school?
That's what we believe we're doing. Yeah.
Other questions?
So is there a reason on the recommendation that it doesn't say add five point eight million dollars for school staffing to include the three priorities?
Because the three priorities could be things other than, it could be a variety of things. So for instance, where we've got, where we're adding capacity to do restorative justice in a number of schools that are, put the pilots on our discipline goal, we could say we're going to double the number of pilots, but that's actually work with resolutions Northwest to do capacity building in those schools, so it's not directly school staffing. It could be that it's an investment in early literacy textbooks. It could be that it's an investment in a professional development opportunity. We've had a suggestion that we're, you know, we build the capacity to address dyslexia. We had some testimony last last board meeting, that that's a strategy. We could say, here's the core of people that we want to send to go get this particular professional. So the three point eight million, it will all be directed specifically at those three strategies and into schools, but it will be, it could be a variety of other things. So, or it could be, you know, literacy specialists or librarians, or, I mean, it could be a number of different things. So it could be school staff, or it could be supports.
And just to, for clarifying questions, I mean, so we're in 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 the budget, we we understand that, so let's just take these three things, third grade reading and the high schools, and the disproportionate discipline. Those were goals going into the budget?
They were goals that we were, we had going into the budget.
Yeah. And and we've we've funded.
Some things.
Yeah, above, you know, we've we've already prioritized, just to be clear on these things. Funding.
Some things for those, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So for instance, the third grade one, we've had a number of camp campaign, we've had elements of it, or we've done pilots, that again, this could give us the capacity to, like, both the third grade reading, we've got pilot sites that were accelerating, that we could, you know, add more, and the disproportionate discipline. And then we had strategies around the high school graduation and completion rate goal, that theoretically, we can either accelerate. Those strategies, do them in more sites.
So if we don't spend all five point eight, we'll just go back to the reserves? Like we don't spend all this money?
If, yeah, if we did not commit it, it would go into reserves, right? Or identify other other commitments that the board was interested in. I mean, you heard some, like, we could do Kellogg, or, I mean, there's numbers, the admin table, or the school white support table.
There's a lot of different things we could invest in here.
We actually identified during the last budget cycle, a list of things that did not make it into the budget, but were our list of priorities that we would come back and revisit also. So like, that's, and it's a significant list, so.
I think an important piece here is that you were talking about things that were ready to go, that already.
Right.
Not starting brand new initiatives, or a whole.
Correct.
Yeah. I had a question, just, could you just refresh us around, I'm very concerned about PERS and the uncertainty around the judgment on that, and what, can you talk a little bit about that? Talking to one particular legislator who said, you know, reminded us to be very cautious about this, and that's been a concern.
Okay, so not satisfied with the complexity of state school fund, you now want to explore PERS.
Well, not not to go down the full explanation, but just to give us a level of the, what the risks we're facing, if you have any sense of that, and what the remedy might be.
Sure. So the most significant risk, long term with PERS, or medium term with PERS, is that the reforms that the legislature passed a year or so ago, which which resulted in lower increases than we would otherwise have got. Rates still went up, but not as much as they would have done. Those changes are being challenged in the courts. If the courts find, if if those changes get thrown out, then that will put upward pressure, significant upward pressure on PERS rates. Slightly mitigating that risk is the question of what happens with investment returns. And fortunately, those have been reasonably robust the last couple of years. But the risk is that, yeah, the reforms get get overturned, and we're looking at sizable increases in PERS rates. And I can't remember if that's starting in fifteen, sixteen, or sixteen, seventeen, but it's 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 soon. But, you know, again, at this point, we don't know what the timeline is on that. But that is a risk.
Right. And that just seemed to me to be another piece that we need to be mindful of and plan ahead for, knowing that we have so many different things we also want to invest in.
Can I ask a follow up to that question? Do you remember off the top of your head what savings we realized by those changes?
I don't remember the dollar amount, but it was it was big money. That's a complex, it's a sophisticated financial term. It was, it was, it was like eight, twelve million dollars. I mean, it was, it was a lot of money.
Yeah.
I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't half a million or a couple hundred thousand. It was millions of dollars a year. Because our, the PERS rate is as a percentage of payroll. And, you know, if you've, if you're, if you've got two hundred, three hundred million dollars of salaries, one percent of that is two or three million dollars. So the PERS rate goes up three percentage points. Now you're talking serious money.
We should also remember that this is not a Portland Public Schools issue. This is an issue that's going to impact every school district across the state, every city, every county, every municipality, higher police. I mean, it's going to impact everybody. I mean, we're all toast. So I'm not sure that we, you know, should.
We should trust the state.
Should spend too much time fretting about it, because there's going to have to be another solution that comes to the forefront, so.
I'll, yeah, but we also don't want to just.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. It's a balance.
In terms of the recommendation, the, in in terms of going from three point nine to five percent contingency.
Six percent.
No, no, there's there's two.
There's two different ones.
There's two different ones. To start with that one. And the risk factors being kindergarten and funding ahead of us from the new biennium. We, correct me if I'm wrong, the question is, is those are risk factors we were well aware of when we adopted a budget at three point nine contingency. Now, and so at that point, we were, we're okay with that. Staff was okay with that. Now that we have more money, same risk factors. But you're suggesting that we put more money in the reserve to cover those same risk factors that we already thought three point nine was okay to cover?
So two things. One was the recommendation to spend down the reserves was a balanced one. From a financial point of view, I think I was very clear in presentations to the board that there was a risk involved in doing this. And so, you know, we're comfortable recommending that, but recognize that there was a risk. It's not the same now, because we're actually recommending spending another five point eight million dollars. So that slide where we showed thirty five million dollars, if you do what we are recommending here, that number is now forty point eight million dollars, because we've got five point eight million. Now, some of that could be one-time money.
Right.
Let's say that one point eight of it is one-time money, and four million is ongoing. That number's now thirty nine million dollars. So we're digging the hole deeper. Every dollar, every million dollars that you don't put in reserves and you spend with an ongoing commitment to need to fund it next year, makes this number bigger and bigger, and that risk equation gets more and more out of balance. So it's a balance. So we are, we're recommending a combination of things. We're recommending, I mean, it's almost three parts. It's, one part goes into reserves to help deal with all of this uncertainty. One part gets spent on additional programs, services, and teachers now. And then the the third part is the most anomalous, because it is that uncertainty factor about, you know, how much of that additional tax revenue could we see disappear, you know, later in the year. And and, you know, I I want to be absolutely clear that I'm, I'm, you know, completely transparent. Your question, Director Curl, was, do we think it's likely, do we expect all of it to get pulled out? We're not saying at this point, we expect all of it. That is possible.
Of the five.
Of the five. And so until we have better clarity about it, we're not comfortable recommending spending.
What's your best guess on it?
I don't, I don't have a best guess. I'm not, I'm not prepared.
Well, that would be nice to be prepared for that, because the.
It's too, it's too uncertain. There's too many things that we do not know about, because it's not just about Portland Public Schools numbers. It's about, it's about numbers from all across the state. We had a conversation with ODE to to ask them, you know, what's the range of possibility? And they're certainly not prepared to go on the record with us about what the range of possibility is. It's, it's, it's possible it could be all of it. It's possible it could be substantially less. But at this point, I I'm, I would, I feel it would be irresponsible of me to speculate on how much that is, given everything else that we're doing here.
I mean, the other thing, too, is I wasn't hearing that the full day K, you were just saying, this is what we anticipate, that we know is going to be happening in twenty fifteen, sixteen.
The reserves is another piece.
So it's not that they're saying, oh, now we now suddenly need to go to reserves to pay for full day K. They're saying that, knowing that we have this coming up, and if we're going to talk about spending more from from this ending fund balance, we just need to be aware that there's this coming, and we'll add to this ongoing. That was all, that's, that's what I heard.
Essentially, what this means, this right here, means that if the state appropriation is less than seven point two five billion, we don't get enough money from the state to maintain current service level. That's translating this thirty five into the the big state number. And and we're now going beyond this, if if you agree with the recommendations that the superintendent has made. Because we're talking about spending almost another six million.
The concern I had when I saw this proposal, this recommendation, is I'm not seeing the urgency around student achievement, what we need to be doing right now. I mean, we have a sixty, seventy percent graduation rate. We're barely meeting minimal instructional hours at our high schools. We just got reports from the Oregonian on state, you know, results where achievement is basically stagnant, not just in Portland Public Schools, but across the state. And I guess I want to see more urgency here. When I think about our reserves, when I want to have the highest reserve, when it looks like the economy is tanking, or it looks like, you know, tax revenues are going to tumble for whatever reason, there's some huge, big things that are, you know, monstrously scary out there that we really need to plan for. And as far as I'm concerned, we're in as good a shape as we've been in the last decade, going into the next legislative session. The economy is begin, I mean, the economy is rebounding. The legislature is moving toward reinvesting more in K twelve education. I mean, there's a lot of things that are going our way. Our enrollment is up. That always helps with our budget. So as I look at it, if if things were going in the complete opposite direction, I would say, yeah, you know what, we need to put some more money in our reserves, and we need to be ready. But I'm not, I don't think that that's what's happening right now. And I would be disinclined to to look at six percent. I'm even disinclined to look at five percent. Five percent is an aspirational goal. And again, it's to prepare for, you know, big, big, difficult, hard times coming, which doesn't seem to be the case. big, difficult, hard times coming, which doesn't seem to be the case at this point in time. So, I'm open to putting a little bit more in the reserves if we have some concerns that are bigger than what we had a couple of months ago when we approved the budget, but outside of that, I'd like us to put the money out into, into our schools and to try to have an impact on student achievement. The one thing that we, that we talked about during the budget cycle as a concern is, and I'll add to this here, is, for example, our high school administrating staffing tables.
The school-wide support table.
The support tables.
Yeah.
So, we have, you know, last year, this year, we added a hundred and eighty new teachers, and that, and we actually hired more like five hundred new teachers when you take into consideration retirements and stuff. The year before, or I don't know if it was the year before that, we had about fifty teachers at the elementary level, related to the arts tax. If we're successful in passing our school levy, renewing it early, we're going to be looking at adding another forty-five teachers next year. What I'm concerned about is whether or not we're giving our principals the support they need to be instructional leaders in their schools. And to be doing, you know, we just had this huge presentation last week on teacher evaluations, and, you know, how, how well our teacher evaluation work group is going and what we're trying to accomplish. But the fact of the matter is that the teacher, if our principals don't have enough administrative support in the buildings to do their jobs, they're not going to be in the classrooms being instructional leaders. And so, my biggest priority, and I brought it up during the budget cycle, and we decided that we didn't have the funds to do that, but we also sort of indicated that if funds became available, that would be one of the first places we'd look. So I would really like us to have that conversation first and foremost, and I think the biggest concern is in our comprehensive high schools. Where you have physicians, and somebody mentioned this a little bit earlier, in terms of, I think it might have been Scott, I'm not sure, in terms of our public testimony, you know, in terms of a career coordinator, we have a career coordinator, you know, serving five hundred, you know, seven hundred kids at one school, and a career coordinator, you know, serving sixteen hundred in another school. That doesn't make sense. You have things like, you know, a halftime bookkeeper in a school, or accountant, somebody referred to it as an accountant, at one school, you know, for seven hundred kids, and in another school sixteen hundred, the same level of, of support. Study hall monitor, monitors, IT staff support. I don't know what the situation is on campus monitors, I couldn't pull that out of the budget, because I think it was pulled into a different table. You know, there's been some suggestions that we should be looking at attendance monitors in our high schools to really, you know, help go out and do home visits and bring kids back. We've talked about social worker, care team kind of personnel. So, I guess when I look at what our needs are, I think they're, they're pretty strong, and that would be an area.
I'm sorry, can I, I just want to make sure, oh, good, we're back to the slide, so I just want to make sure, since we're about ten minutes over our time, could you, so I just want to make sure we're clear, so you aren't in agreement with increasing to five percent, definitely not to six percent? And I'm hearing on the school staffing, the high school support table is your, where you'd want to see the money go, or is that for the three point eight?
You would spend more.
Yeah, I mean, we're basically talking about increasing reserves by about ten million dollars, and if you look at that in teaching positions, it's about a hundred positions, if you look at it in terms of classified positions, you could be talking about two hundred positions. Obviously, that is, we're not talking about those numbers, because we can't sustain those. I mean, anytime you're adding positions, we got to be able to afford those year after year after year. But I am suggesting that if we want our teachers to perform at optimum level, they need to have instructional leaders in their school who can actually help them and be there to support them. So, I'm suggesting that we have other places, that we could look at spending money other, and I'd like for you to come back and maybe talk to us about some of these other areas. You had talked about some of the areas in the budget that we didn't get to, that we wished we would have gotten to. I'd like to have that as part of the conversation, so we can decide, do we want to do those, or do we want to add ten million dollars to the reserves?
Okay.
And I think there's enough urgency that we need to have that conversation.
Okay, but in terms of the third bullet, to add two million, you're in agreement with that?
If we need two million dollars for current teaching staff, yes, of course.
And then the three point eight, are you still wanting here around the three priorities, or more the larger, all, all other, other priorities as well, or?
I think the, investing in the three priorities makes sense, I'd like to have a little bit more information on what you're talking about. But, I'm talking about the ten million dollars that we're talking about, putting into reserves right now, when we passed a budget a couple of months ago, where we felt relatively comfortable at three point nine percent. Again, I'm comfortable increasing the reserves a little bit, if we, for some reason, feel that that's important right now, but I would like to see us figuring out how to have an impact on what's happening around our buildings.
So can I do what I'm taking away from this?
Yeah.
So, and one of the things that we'd identified during the budget process is the staffing team this year was going to tackle the school-wide support table, and because this year, we actually had put said, all the staff you get goes to teaching.
Right.
And so, and you, but you don't get to pull it off to meet other needs, and, but that we were going to look at, and some of that's become visible in staffing this year. Okay, so what I'm taking away is that you would like a plan that spends more of this, these dollars now, reduces the outpouring in reserve. I don't know what, how far of a spending plan that you'd like to see, but you'd like to see more of a spending plan that includes looking at the school-wide support tables now, so accelerate that, probably these same two things, but really lean in on the, put it into schools now. And we can come back with a plan that does that.
And I'd love to look at the overall budget in terms of what were the things that we would have liked to have done. So there's things like some one-time expenses, like-
We can do that.
-textbook adoptions, or technology purchases, you know, all these new teachers, do they have technology to support their work? I have no idea. But those would be more of one-time expenses, so I'd love to get a little bit more information on that, so we're not just deciding, let's put ten million in reserve, we're deciding, we're going to put ten million instead of this.
Okay.
If you all have an interest in that, in seeing us spend more, we can bring back both what were the priorities coming out of the last budget process, and exactly what you've said.
So, thank you, let's go, let's hear from everyone quickly, and then we'll also be sure to poll those who weren't here, so, great.
So I'll jump in, I'm not too far off from what Director Regan is suggesting, that I'm actually really fiscally conservative, and if, I think it was as easy as saying that if we were headed for an economy slump, let's just put more money away. If it was that easy, we would have figured that out last time, and unfortunately, the economy and the predictions don't work that way. That being said, I do think that I'd be willing to err a little bit more on the less cautious side, to say I'm more interested in finding ways to spend rather than go to six percent. I'm comfortable with staying at five percent, that I, I think it's never easy to hold money back and put in reserves, but I think that's been our fiscal prudence, is that we've been able to slowly build that back. I could also probably be as low as four and a half percent. Again, we don't have to do it all in one fell swoop, we can build this back. We know that our schools are still not back to whole, and so, to your point, Director Regan, and to yours, Superintendent Smith, that I would love to see what, what our other next priorities were in that list.
Yep.
To begin to do that, I do remember a discussion about staffing table. I also know that there are some elementary schools that still feel really full, and I know that, and that being said, I appreciate, what I think I hear our board saying is, we also really intentionally, in the adoption of the current year's budget, did not just push it out, all of the funding back out to FTE generally, just to generally layer it by point something, that we wanted to make strategic investments. And so I really would like to see, as, as you begin to build that plan, or as we look back, what are the strategic investments that we can really move the dial for, especially our underserved, whether that's special, special education, whether that's, and I know that's tricky, because there are federal dollars with that, and it does maintenance of effort, there are a lot of things there, but special education, our, obviously, our students of color, the disproportionality rate, we have an opportunity to actually change the trajectory for those students, and I would love for us to find a way, or to look what our options are. So, that's where I'm, that gets you, what you need, Director Regan?
I think that's great, thanks, so other folks?
Yeah, I agree with what's being said, I'd like to see some more money getting spent, just because I'm in the building, and I see that we do need more support staff, especially like in the book room, we need people there, and just like having new textbooks, like if we use do one-time things, that just makes such a big improvement in a class, like a class gets so greatly improved by just having that textbook. And I think there's a lot of investments that we could make without, like, having them be super in the future, just like spending that once, but it really does make a big difference for every student.
So, I, I was comfortable at three point nine percent contingency, when we all passed the budget, and we all passed that budget. And I, I actually was willing to, I thought three is what the policy was, and I think maybe going down to three was appropriate. So, I don't see any reason to change that, so personally, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at. I think that when you do get a infusion like this, that it's probably prudent to really review the one-time expenditure possibilities, and, because it's, it's not money that, you know, it's money we didn't anticipate, we anticipated ongoing expenditures, now we have, we have such a backlog of one-time expenditures that we can do, we should take a hard look, look at that. And, you know, David Porter talked about a five-year plan for immersion, I mean, that would be great to have a five-year plan. What's our five-year plan for IT? What's, you know, we, we need to really on, on, be, we need to plan ahead, and as we make those plans, then decisions like this become easier, because we have a roadmap. So, yeah, so that's where my, where my head's at. It's been a great presentation, I appreciate that. And, and by the way, I mean, I think, you know, getting one, I think one percent is a very reasonable margin error, so.
Less than one percent.
I actually want to commend staff on a one, I mean, less than one percent, I mean, that's really outstanding in a budget of this size.
But, the, but I share, I share Bobby's, and I think we all do, but, but then we got to put, put our, our dollars or our mathes, I mean, there, there is an urgency, we're nowhere near where we need to be, and it's, now's not the time to be increasing our contingencies.
Great. So, I think I come down a little more in the middle ground here. I do feel that we'd be very prudent to increase our reserves. I'm not sure about the six percent, I think I'm more where Greg was in the four point five, five percent. I feel there are enough uncertainties, and given past performance of some of our partners and the other entities that we're dealing with, and lots of uncertainties out there. I would love to see the legislature continue to expand investment in K-12 and fully fund full day K, we haven't talked about the PE requirements yet, you know, I, I, I remain cautious and concerned, so I do feel that we need to increase our reserves using this. As, and I, I think Tom's point is a really well-taken one in terms of the one-time piece, given, I mean, there are so many needs in every building, at lower grades, we've paid a lot of attention to high schools, it was much needed, but lower grades also need a lot of attention, every level does. So, given that we're just about to start that new cycle, I'll go right into the next year's budget, I'm a little concerned about us pausing and sort of reopening last year's budget for a whole, I think we need to, I like the idea of finding where there could be some, I mean, in addition to getting out the FTE that we need to, for the most urgent issues in the schools, if you have some really specific, here's an expansion of a priority where we feel like, you know, adding more sites to a proven program is something that's really going to be strategically important, that would be great to hear, but I like the idea, given that we have had years and years of not enough, you know, textbooks and technology, I think that's, that's- Pardon?
I'm sorry, not enough anything.
Anything, yeah.
Not enough anything, yeah, but given, I'm concerned about us saying, let's, let's fund this and staff that, and then knowing that it's going to go into ongoing commitments, and then we would have to pull those back again, if we had to, if, if things didn't work out as well as we thought. So, yes, absolutely the urgency, but I really want to, I'm hoping we can find sort of a cautious middle ground here, would be my, would be my input.
I think you've given good, what you just have done, we can build some options at different thresholds, where you can weigh the reserve and one-time and ongoing commitments, because it's a balance of all of those that-
Right.
And we've got material from our budgeting process that gives us things to bring back to you.
Right, and then we'll work with staff, for, the board members who weren't able to be here tonight, that, of course, they've gotten this information, but we can work with-
And I think we can still separate here, are the FTE we want to be able to release and authorize next, at the board meeting, and here are the things that you still want to weigh as, you know, they want to have, be able to have more discussion about, so like two parts, we want to be able to release the FTE immediately, so, yeah, okay.
Right, we all agree on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just jumping in, I just want to, somebody mentioned the levy that's, that's coming up, and I don't know if folks have noticed, but in the last two or three years, between the legislature and the decisions, the board's been making, there's been a momentum building in the positive direction. And I guess I just want to highlight that, I, I, one, I was surprised that our local media described the sixteen point eight as a windfall, and that's not how I would have phrased it, but then I remind myself that they have a political agenda, it's a conservative paper, they're looking for a tax break, that's what their editorial was for, and so it made sense, as to me, why the headline writers at least described it that way. But I also just want to encourage folks to not be afraid to ride this momentum, to actually begin to invest. I think families have been here for a long time waiting for this moment, and I understand the trepidation, the caution, that is this going to be exactly what we want? And I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues, and I'm appreciative of that, is that we want to actually invest it as quickly as we can in schools, in smart and strategic ways, not in the ways it's always been done, but in a way that continues to build a momentum so that we can break the stagnation, so that we don't find ourselves, that we continue to outperform the state, and that we raise that graduation rate. So, I just want to put that in context, that we have an opportunity to lean in and really make a difference for a whole new generation of kids who are in our schools today and tomorrow.
And I wanted to put a little plug in on a one-time expense that maybe wasn't a big part of the conversation last year, because I don't know that we were ready for it last year, which has to do with arts funding. So in the last budget, we put a fair amount of money into PE and into sports in particular, and it was just such an exciting lift, and then we added to that by basically completing all of our turf fields and tracks. So, the thing that I want to talk about is the fact that we are, we have an arts TOSA, we are attempting to build a K-12 arts continuum curriculum. The city of Portland, whether you love it or hate it, we have an arts tax that is supporting art teachers at the K-five level, and the question is, then what? And one of the areas that I think that we, we know supports our athletic program, and we know supports school spirit, is band. And one of the things that happens when you try to start a band program is you have a huge expense because of the instruments. So it'd be wonderful to try to figure out slowly but surely how we start a band program, starting in middle school, or sixth grade, with the K-eights, and at least kids getting some basic understanding of band, and at the high school level, really expand that program, so I'm not sure that that would have hit. And we also just know all of the reasons why music supports math education, and, you know, all of those wonderful relationships. So, it wasn't in there, I haven't, we haven't gotten a, any, any information of late from our arts TOSA, and what the arts TOSA is working on in terms of the K-12 curriculum, but I just want to put that out there as, if you're talking about something that would light up our community, I think that could be something that would be really exciting.
As a former music teacher-
Oh, there you go. So, anyway.
I mean, I, I appreciate you bringing it up, because I do think that it's one of those things that we have pockets, and so if somebody has it in elementary, they go to a middle school where then they don't have a program, or it switches to choir, or it switches to band, or then it goes to high school, and so, I get really excited about that, and at the same time, I want to make sure that our strategic investments, my, again, are, are moving student achievement, and I do think music is one of those, and so, I'd be interested in that, but I do admit that there's a little bit of selfish bias, but selfish hopefully in the service of kids.
Well, and there are, I mean, again, there are so many needs, there are so many worthy ways we could invest. I know, I know, so with that, we're going to cut that off for now, on ongoing discussion. So, thank you staff so much for all your hard work, I really appreciate it, and I think we're done for this evening, the next meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-third, this meeting is adjourned.